Thank you. And welcome to everybody that's stringing the meeting. Under my announcements, make it quick as possible. As most people understand, the governor has required, and I'm using the word required, certain aspects of the state to be opened up, and we are complying with that. And so that means that effective today, some of the retail establishments were open for sidewalk pickup, takeout of goods, and appointments. And Friday they will be open if they follow social distancing. On Monday, the restaurants will be open following social distancing and a reduced clientele. However, at this point, we don't know what that means. We don't know if reduce is 10%, 50%, we have no idea yet. So hopefully the governor will give us guidance on that before that time comes. And as of Saturday, we're opening the farmer's market on Vista. It will be fairly stringently regulated by the farmer's market people. There was one entrance in and one exit. And you're going, people will be going there to purchase food and not to socialize. There'll be no music or other types of items to purchase. So it will be food, which is the dairy, the meat, and of course, the produce. And we still don't know about massage or nail salons. But next Monday, I'm sorry, starting this Friday, barbers and beauticians or hair salons are open for business with social distancing. The regulations having to do with these particular businesses have been put forth. And so I would urge any of our people that are watching, that are going to be going to any of these establishments, and particularly the owners of these business establishments, to please research what those requirements are and to please follow those requirements. It's somewhat ironic that yesterday, the state is quote "opening up" effective today, I'm sorry, effective yesterday, and overnight, we had over 400 more cases and we had 33 people more die in the state of Arizona. So that's not a political statement, I just put it out of fact. With that, call to the public, and I believe we have one letter from, yeah, we have two letters?
We received an email.
Oh, okay, fine, Ms. Landers.
This is from Fred Miller, Homer, Copper City Inn. Good evening, council. These comments reflect my opinion of what should be changed in the draft budget. Suggestion number one, add $16,000 to the advertising budget of the transient room tax. Where there is ample money in the advertising budget, we can entice visitors to Bisbee. When there isn't, as there wasn't in the current budget, we can't. Rather than go into details, suffice to say that in 2019, when the 1% additional tax sunsetted in March, 2019 summer was mediocre. The previous year, 2018, was outstanding with $50,000 advertising. This year will be even more challenging because most every city in Arizona is going to be hungry, competitive, and pay out advertising dollars to attract visitors that will spend money to fill depleted revenues. $50,000 means that Bisbee can allocate a good portion of that to a matching grant with the Arizona Office of Tourism and still have some money to advertise in media, not mandatory by an AOT grant. The $34,000 allocated is simply not enough. One possible source for them, one possible source is for the Mine Tour to kick in $16,000, as they have done for many years, with the exception of last year. A look at the Mine Tour's numbers during the periods when there was $50,000 in advertising versus when not, and it is readily apparent that the increased advertising has greatly benefited the Mine Tour. In fact, there is no reason for the Mine Tour to do their own advertising at a cost of $25,000. It should be folded into the city's tourism advertising. A second possible source is the 2.5% bed tax raise to be put on the ballot this year and will take effect in March 2021 if passed. There was 62,342 generated in March, April, May, June of 2019 from the existing 2.5% bed tax. Even if half that amount is generated, it will be more than offset, it will more than offset the advertising increase, and it has the added benefit of coming in the last quarter of the fiscal year, which is when additional advertising for summer should be done. This tax, unlike the TPT raise, will likely pass because there is no adverse fiscal impact on residents nor businesses. Business owners have pleaded with the city for many years to increase advertising for the city. It is very clear that increased advertising means increased visitation, and that means more TPT flowing into the city bank account. Please keep that happening. Suggestion number two, remove the $230,000 from the projected sales tax revenue. It is based on an assumption that the 1% sales tax increase to be put on the ballot, not yet voted by council, will pass. That is a shaky assumption and should not be budgeted because there will likely be opposition from businesses and residents to raising the sales tax to 10.6%, particularly if the county and the state, as is being discussed, raise their TPT. So if the tax is not passed, there will, there will be a general fund deficit. Suggestion number three, without knowing how much Tucson ambulance runs have generated this year, it is difficult to assess the estimate of the $864,000. Since Bisbee Fire Department is not making Tucson runs any longer, then that estimate seems shaky. Figures on this year's Tucson runs should be deducted from that $864,000. Suggestion four, ambulance subscription estimates seem wildly optimistic. And that's all.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I have one from Claire Chafee. I see that Councilmember Klein would like to respond to a comment I made during one of the work sessions in regards to the Senior Center. Councilmember Klein had said that she had some sort of contact with a board member, with whom I think we have the right to know who it is. And this individual apparently told Ms. Klein that, that the Senior Center had a lot of money in their account, and Ms. Klein wanted to know why we pay their bills. My question is, did she not see the budget is only approximately $27,000? They run a lot of programs, provide a lot of services, and not only to our seniors. That amount of money is a drop in the bucket, and I see no money in, in there for Chuck, a measly $7500. So if you can put some of your energy and time fighting for the Senior Center, I would greatly, greatly appreciate it. I am aware the mayor and the city manager had their meeting with Chuck. Claire.
Thank you, ma'am. Accounts payable?
I move that we create accounts payable in the amount of $327,888.77.
Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. To pay accounts payable, do we have questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of paying accounts payable signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two, approval of consent agenda, and we have one item. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on April 7th, 2020 at 7:00 P.M. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, item A.
Thank you, I'll second that. Ms. Cornetta?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. O-MO Business, item three, discussion of possible approval of ordinance O-2006, authorizing the acquisition or exercise of interest in real property located within the city of Bisbee. This is what we would call the second reading. Ms. Cohen?
Thank you. So this is in relation to liens that we currently have on real estate within your city. Some of those liens end up being released through judgments, folks who are foreclosing on properties for a first mortgage or for tax certificates and requesting treasuries. This would be a way for us to act before that happens.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So these people that have liens, how have they been notified that there are liens so that they are aware?
They receive a letter before the lien is actually filed with the county reporter's office.
And if they met the, whoever it is against the lien, how, how is it removed? Is that their responsibility to ever have it removed, or does it automatically get removed once they're?
No, we would release the lien once it was paid in full. Yes. Sometimes though, the lien is released as part of a judgment that goes before the court. And in a couple of cases, we have received summons to court to defend ourselves with our lien position. So there's a number of ways that's happened.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance O-2006, authorizing the acquisition or exercise of interest in real property located within the city of Bisbee.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornetta?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number four, discussion of possible approval of ordinance O-2007, authorizing the acquisition of real property located within the city of Bisbee. This again is the second reading. Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Cohen?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
So I guess I should ask one on the last one too, but I'm assuming this is the same type of situation that when you acquire, it's going to be for affordable housing? So how is that going to be decided? Affordable housing people that are chosen, is there going to be a, can I ask that? Sorry, is there going to be like an application? Is it going to be on a sliding scale? The reason I ask this is sometimes it seems that people that have much better means are going to have these places versus the people that could really use them. Does that make sense?
Yes, because it does need to be someone who can afford to make payment on the new home. So sometimes that will make it seem as though it's people with a higher income bracket perhaps than the group with the highest need, but that would be a different type of housing. So this is not the only housing initiative that's currently being considered. This is just one option, and this would be for homeowners.
If I might, unless I'm mistaken, the city will not be going into a housing, we will not be managing affordable housing.
Right.
We are simply the conduit to get land and property to those that do, that do that so that they will be using their sliding scales and their current criteria in making those decisions. And you know, all these places already have long waiting lists.
Right. So is they in reference to few places like HUD and these type of places? Is that what?
Actually, for the Affordable Housing Initiative, we're currently working with the folks at Compass Affordable Housing out of Tucson.
Compass?
Compass Affordable Housing out of Tucson. And so they have their own programs that they operate and sources of funding that they're accustomed to accessing.
Anything else? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance O-2007, authorizing the acquisition of real property located at 121 North Quatche Lane.
Second. Ms. Cornetta?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to New Business, item number six, discussion of possible approval to award a contract to provide and install an aviation fuel management system.
I think you skipped number five this week.
One more.
I don't have any. Oh, yeah, I do, I like.
Oh. Thank you all. I'm starting to do this once a meeting, and I'm doing it on purpose, so you'll understand. So I sincerely appreciate your.
Sure.
All right, item number five, discussion of possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O-2008, accepting the transfer of real property from the Dykes Family Trust located at 416 North Street, I'm sorry, N Street, Bisbee.
Yes. So this, yeah. So this property has already come before you, there was already, and ordinance approved, it was already published, we sent a special warrant TV to the Dykes Family Trust. They are insistent that they will provide us with a quick claim deed, not with a special warrant TV, so we needed to come back to you with that change in the ordinance that the city would accept the quick claim deed to the power.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I move that we approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance 0-20-08, accepting the transfer of real property from the Dykes Family located at 416 N Street, Bisbee.
That would be, it's the family trust that we're accepting of trust?
Well, it didn't have that in the motion.
Okay, well, that's why, that's why I'm bringing that up. All right, with that, we have that motion as family trust, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. With that in mind, we have a second. And Ms. Cornetta, would you please?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously.
Now getting with the New Business, and the much anticipated Jesus Haro or public works right here, is going to discuss the possible approval to award a contract to provide and install an aviation fuel management system. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We did publish a request for sealed proposals. We only received the one in response, responsible from Conklin Electric, he's proposing to provide a QT pod M4000 fuel management system that is basically an upgrade to the existing one we have same manufacturer. We have, currently have the M3000, which is the one that will be supported by QT pod. So we'll give him just an upgrade, and he, Mr. Conklin Electric, will provide the system and installation. His proposal is for $16,000. I did mention in my discussion on the council action form that this purchase will actually make this line item go negative, however, we do, we are going to receive money from the, it's called the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, so, ORCA is for short, and we're gonna, we've already been notified that we will, we are awarded $20,000. So we will be, we will be able to use that to cover that, the cost for the fuel management system.
Right, and, and Kirk Patrick's office would invite me again today that we have been awarded that. So any questions? Yes, I have one second.
Do we have any idea when we might be receiving those funds?
I don't know exactly when we will receive them. I did receive the form, and I did make the appropriate signatures and sent that back the last, I believe, beginning of last week. So, yes, beginning of last week. So I don't know yet when we can receive this.
Okay, thank you.
Allegedly soon and certainly before the end of the budget year. We're, we're told. Mr. Zorro, or, Mr. Abrams?
From what I understand, this actually, aviation management system, is this so that you can run the gas pumps as well as the airplane?
Yes, what it does is it runs your gas pump, the pump is, is separate, so it does have a, it does have, it does have the meter, flow meter on it so that we can regulate, it charges you. What this also does is it runs the software for building in current, in our current, MQT M4000 does not support our bank that we currently use, so we get charged a large fee for using the old bank. Once we get to the QT M4000, we can switch the bank that we use to process those, those payments and reduce the fees that we currently pay.
Okay, because I was thinking for $60,000, no more planes coming in here, I'll go out and fill them up.
It runs, it's a complete software.
But I don't think I would be able to, you know, take care of the work computer.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there still a manual operation out there? Is it possible for a human to do that, go out there and pump the aviation fuel?
It's a self-serve, it's a self-serve system, so yes, you manually do it, it's just a matter of, we're replacing the, the computer system that charges you. So we're in, so that's what, that's what's going on.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion? I move to award a contract to provide and install an aviation fuel management system to Conklin Electric. Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornetta?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, updated discussion of Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, ADQ, inspection of the city of Bisbee wastewater collection system. Mr. Harrow?
So I was informed or contacted by a staff member from ADQ in March that we were due for an inspection. They attempted to do the inspection of our wastewater treatment plant at the same time. We had some difficulty, so we had to reschedule that, so we rescheduled it to April. We ended up having some rain that caused some, caused us to have to push that back. So we finally got that done in, in the 21st. He did, prior to coming and making a visit, noted finally that there were two potential deficiencies. One was that they didn't have an operator of record, and the second was the wastewater treatment that was overlooked. We know that, we've addressed that. And so, prior to him coming to make sure that it was addressed, I contacted him, gave him our operator of record, it's a, even more because he is certified to the appropriate level for our collection system, so we made sure that they have that on record. He did come in, and we did go over our paperwork, our processes, and make sure that we were correctly following the processes that they require. Definitely, we met those. And then we went out into the field and took a look at some problem areas that they, the problem areas that we would be looking at are places where we have our manholes in the middle of the street, where we have inverted grounds, basically, Rude Avenue, Spring. Wait, were those inverted, inverted ground roads were, and so he went over, took a look at those. We notified him that we had ordered some inflow protectors, those are some protectors that go underneath the manholes to prevent water from going into the manhole, so he was satisfied with that. We also notified him that we recently purchased a smoke, a smoke tester, with that tester, where we were able to test and locate leaks where we have potential for inflow into our system. He was satisfied with that also. So through the inspection, we came back with no efficiencies, and he gave us a, an approval.
Wonderful, Mr. Harrow. We like ADQ coming here and looking like a smile. Item number eight, updated discussion of submitted sealed proposals for the demolition of Old City Hall. Mr. Harrow?
So we did publish the request for sealed proposals on the demolition of the remains, remains of City Hall. We received seven proposals, which is what I thought was a good response. I met with, I believe, everybody that gave a proposal in the field, they all came out, took a look, some of them asked, they came out, take a second look, we backed up some of them out to the old sewer ponds to, for one of the suggested areas to destroy some of the materials. In the end, oh, I guess maybe I should explain a little bit about the base and alternates. So the way I published that was the base bid was for the demolition. The alternate was for the removal of the material to the, alternate one was the removal of the materials to our wastewater ponds. Alternate two was removal to a third-party site of their choosing, they were to let us know one of those were gone. And then three was filling in the basement. Doing that, in publishing it that way, we, I knew that we would always select the base bid plus two of the, either alternate one or alternate two, and then most likely alternate three, there's, there's a way that we could leave the, with maybe some rating so that there's not a big slow, you know, big drop off, we could slope it into a, into a, something of that. The lowest bid proposal, knowing that we were going to, using base bid, alternate one and alternate three came from MDG Construction and Development, it's a hundred and thirty, was it, did I forget? It was a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, I believe, is the, is the lowest one. And the, so we definitely had some that ranged up into the 240,000 for the, for those, that demolition. At this point, in just bringing this information to you, when we first decided we were going to put this out for proposal, it was something that we were looking for information on to what we can make the best decision. With that, I'll.
Thank you. How, how long is the base bid for?
That I don't know, I'll have to check.
Are they generally good for 30 to 90 days?
I think, I would have to do a second. Right, I would appreciate it if we'd get a, a number on how long we have to make decisions.
Sure.
Great. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Harrow, appreciate that, very much. Item number nine, discussion of possible approval of the updated memorandum of understanding, that's MOU, between the Bisbee Firefighters Association, Local 2146, BFFA, IAFF, and the city of Bisbee, effective July 2, 2020. Ms. Cohen? Ms. Klein?
I, since my son is the president of the FFA Local 2146 and negotiated this MOU, I'm going to recuse myself from any discussion or opening on this.
Thank you, ma'am. So you're, you're public notifying of a conflict and refusing yourself? Yes, thank you.
I'm accusing myself.
Well.
I know.
Yeah, it is a conflict, so therefore you're refusing yourself. I'm just trying to make the record straight.
First statement does comply with 38503.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate that, Ms. Cohen. Okay? Okay, Ms. Coleman and Ms. Landers. And by the way, the President of the Assembly, Mr. Klein, is here if we have direct questions of him, if these, if our staff can answer. Please.
All right, thank you. So, actually, one of the very first items of interest that came to my attention after I started at your head city manager was a desire to have a current MOU memorandum of understanding with the Firefighters Association. It took us a little time to get there, but we did. I felt like we had some very good meetings and discussions in regard to what was in your, the previous MOU and how to move forward. The Firefighters Association Local did make some significant concessions in their changes to the MOU. If you have questions about what those are specifically, we can cover those. And then also, you'll see that a significant change is a change in the way that their overtime is calculated. So, rather than be calculated on 212 hours, it's calculated on 106 hours. That will allow the firefighters an opportunity to use their PTO in a week in which they would sacrifice the fewest overtime hours, which are essentially part of their structural pay. So, it was a way for us to acknowledge that they were actually losing PTO or having PTO fall off because they weren't using it in order to preserve their structural overtime.
Right.
Got a question.
Yes.
You just stated a significance concession about four of those.
Yes. So, one of them was very recent, and that was in consideration of the five hours of on-call pay. And they did ask that we add a reference that if an employee was not able to fulfill their full 24-hour period, then their on-call would only be two hours of pay. And I'm gonna let Joelle pick up with her nicely highlighted reference of the copy.
And that is in reference to if an employee is on-call for a 24-hour shift and for whatever reason, they cannot complete that shift. For example, they have to go for an emergency with family or something of that nature, then they would not lose out on all of the five hours. They would still earn two hours because then we have to max them.
Okay.
Anything else?
Oh... Gee. We worked on this for quite some time. So, section one actually was condensed quite significantly. We cleaned up the language about the uniform allowance.
So, I guess maybe I should clarify.
Yes.
To me, when you say they made concessions, to me, that means that they gave something up.
Um, they changed, well, they gave something up. They actually suggested to us that what was in the previous MOU was now no longer appropriate, given their current relationship with the city. So, so it was things along that line.
So, it's not necessarily that they asked for this, but they had to take a lower, lower thing?
No, no.
That's, when you say that, that's what registers to me, that's why I was asking.
Yes, no.
So, does that make sense, what my understanding of it, because that's what I wanted to clarify?
Yes. So, so rather than giving, giving something up, they clarified or cleaned up some language that they felt was necessary for the operation and understanding of their department.
So, it was, they had to sacrifice anything that they had prior to this?
They did, they offered up the items that were in concession.
Any other questions? There is an empty motion. Does anybody need to ask, the President, do you need any questions? No? Okay.
Okay, I move to approve the updated MOU between Bisbee Firefighters Local 2146 and the City of Bisbee effective July 1st, 2020.
I second.
Would it be July 2nd, is it? Is it the 1st? Okay. All right, I'm reading from two different documents. Our agenda says the 7th, so that's why I was asking.
My apologies.
Thank you.
No, no, that's...
So, anyone who said it was the 1st?
It is the 1st. It is the 1st.
All right. You were correct. The 2nd is correct. We're all online. Ms. Carver? Who's 2nd? Oh? I 2nd.
Uh, Councilmember Hanson. Mayor Protem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominno?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein has recused herself. Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes 6-0, that's unanimously with one abstention. And, Mr. Klein, thank you so much for being here. Sorry you had to wait around for... So, you go back and tell the troops it's a done deal. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
They did a great job, it was a pleasure to work with them members.
Item number 10, discussion of possible approval of Resolution R2013, adopting the tentative budget for the City of Bisbee fiscal year 2021, as well as giving notice of the time for the public hearing to taxpayers for the adoption of the budget. Ms. Coleman and Ms. Bagley.
Thank you. So, this is the hard work that we did in the previous week to get to your tentative budget. This is now your final budget. If approved, this will though be your maximum budget, and then we can work with you from here.
For people's clarifications that are streaming, this is the bottom line. But between now and the final adoption, items within the budget can be changed between classes and so forth. They can be changed between funds, but not, the bottom line remains the same. So... That is the bottom, yes. Yes, and I am bringing that up because, like Mr. Miller's letter and so forth, it gives the time, the council time if they wanted to even consider that, to make those changes within, within departments, et cetera. So, I wanted to clarify that. Ms. Coleman, were we going to discuss the senior center?
We can. I was also gonna point out in reference to $50,000 travel advertising, it actually is a combination of what's in the visitor's center budget and what's in the Clean Mind Tour budget for advertising. Doug and Jen with DocCap Mouse, DocCap Mouse Media have a really good working relationship. They have worked together in the past. The Clean Mind Tour manager does recognize that there's an advantage for him to include his advertising with restaurants and other events that are taking place in town as a way to draw folks also to his establishment. So, it in no way cuts the available advertising budget. It just puts part of it into an enterprise fund and part of it into the sales tax responsibility.
And so, actually, that portion of what Mr. Miller brought up is in fact being done.
Yes.
It's just not a direct transfer into the fund. It's two different funds putting into one place. All right, just for clarification.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Surely, the senior center situation, I can mention that the city manager and I met with the director of the senior center. He brought all of his financials. And with the $7,500 a year that he's being paid, which is minimum wage, they are still losing $2,000 a year. So, they do not have lots of money in their bank account. It is my, my wish personally that we fund the senior center as we have in the past. It's a very, very important part of our community. And the fact is that with them going in the hole, $2,000 a year, I discussed with them potential of fundraisers and things like this in the future to try to assist. So, that's where we're at. Ms. Coleman, did you have anything to add?
Yes, so the agreement with the Bisbee Senior Association was executed in 1991. So, it's quite an old document. There are some terms within the document that are no longer applicable or have not been followed. At your next meeting, I will be bringing to draft memorandum of understanding with the Bisbee Senior Association that will really address just the basics of how to interact with the city and make a request for funds at budget time.
Yes.
My first question is, why did they quit funding the senior center? Why did we quit funding the senior center?
Actually, it was a council by council decision in each budget year to include funds for the senior center in the budget. It was not part of the agreement that was executed. The agreement indicated that the city actually would receive 40% of the membership dues that the senior association collected and did not address the city making monetary contributions in return. That was a 1991 agreement. At the 1992 budget discussion, the council agreed to fund $7,500 towards the operations of the senior center. It has evidently been an annual budget discussion about the contribution.
So, they bring in money and we take it away?
No.
Oh.
No.
The original agreement indicated that the city would receive 40%. We do not receive 40%.
Okay.
And I'm gonna say, let me just clarify that also, Ms. Japanese. That this agreement is so old that the city, the money that they received was to go to the Cochran Queen Hospital, which then was distributed to us at 40% of whatever was sent to the Cochran Queen. I mean, so this agreement is so old and so need, needing to be revised, that that's why we discussed the fact that Ms. Coleman is going to hammer out an MOU and so...
Right, so it's just a budgetary decision on an annual basis. Because it was not a term of the initial agreement, Carrie and I did not include it in this tentative budget.
So, I guess my, it's not a question that's concerned. You're asking old people to do fundraisers? I mean, I can see that of the youth fund, but I mean, why, I don't understand why we aren't funding a senior center. I mean, these are our people...
You, we're not saying that we're not funding the senior center. But that's totally, that's a budgetary decision for the council to make.
That's what I'm requesting, is that we do fund them, Ms. Japanese.
Right. But then you also said you talked about them doing fundraisers?
Yes, they're losing $2,000 a year even with our funding. And we were talking about fundraisers have to do with things like, things that they do right now, like bingo and things like that are fundraisers, that they're quite capable of continuing. Ms. Klein?
Okay, and just, just for clarification, I didn't say they had lots of money. When that came up in the budget discussion, I said a member had contacted me and asked about the utilities, if we were paying all the utilities, to which I said, I thought you did, and that was a question I asked with Coleman that night, was if we paid all the utilities, because this member said that there was money in the account to pay the utilities. I said nothing else about anything else.
Okay.
So, that was just my, my question, and it came from the member.
Okay.
So...
They don't have money and they're paying the utilities?
I just, I just asked.
Any other questions? I'm asking, Mrs. Treasurer?
Not yet.
Is it best to add that to the bottom line, or is it best to find that money within what we already have? What's, what's best for you? It's not that much money in the $20 million budget.
Um, I mean, I don't know if we have somewhere else we can take it from, but I mean, we can increase the bottom line. It would really just be increasing the use of line balance and then...
Yes. Why don't we, why don't we do that if the council doesn't have any objections? Do we have a motion?
Are we a bit able to, or is this just on the senior center, we're talking about our...
No, ma'am.
No, I do have some other questions.
Sure.
I mean, I still have concern about the city sales tax. And that's because we do move, what happens if those pass? What happens to the numbers that are in the...
Yeah, that's actually, then there are some services that the city will have to consider not providing.
So, we're still stuck with that number then in the budget, is that... A little high. Building permits, is that a real estate? How many building permits have we had to date? Do you guys know off the top of your head? Do we have close to $69,000?
I don't, I don't know to date. Oh, yes, I would know, that would have been in that March document that was provided to us. I don't know the number, I think it's like the dollar amount, but that doesn't reflect the new, right, that doesn't reflect the new... Let's see, so...
Nor the Alco building.
Okay. Yeah. Which we had, yeah, we, right, where they had to pay extra. All right, it looks like I picked, oh, I'm sorry, I picked up the wrong document.
Fifty, $53,000 as of March.
As of March, and so we have two more months, March is only, three, three more months, how to go, one, that's sort of... So, you estimate that we're gonna make another $16,000?
Right, and that's based on an increase that's in the B schedule that goes into a back on the...
Because it just seems a little high. Okay. And your ambulance fees, again, the BANE $850, have you taken out the Tucson runs that we have? How, we may need this year because we won't have that next year.
The fees were based on the numbers given to me by the fire chief, on the number of calls that they've had this year, times the new rate increase that they're expecting, and times the 60% collection rate.
So, it didn't, you didn't include any Tucson runs at all?
That, it's the number that was given to me by the fire department of the calls they expected to see.
But that's not answering the question, because we're not getting any of the Tucson calls anymore, correct? Because of this new MOU.
Will we get any Tucson?
It's, there's, there's a trade-off. So, they were not taking calls because they didn't have enough equipment. And they would be gone to Tucson when a Sierra Vista call came in, so then they couldn't take Sierra Vista calls. So, it's a trade-off of not having the equipment, not being gone to Tucson and back when another call comes in. So, it's not, you know, it's the odds.
Right, so again, then if we don't meet that $850,000, then it's gonna be a shortfall for us.
Yes, right. Right, we didn't meet the 1.15 from your last budget either.
Right.
Right.
And as far as the subscriptions go, we haven't even started that, right? This is getting ready to start. So, do you already have people applying? Because 775 seems to be rather high.
Well, it depends on, your next meeting will present to you a possible subscription program. And then it depends upon what the council decides to move forward with as far as offering folks the opportunity to subscribe in order to help pay the difference. in order to help pay the difference between what their insurance pays and what their actual billing equals.
Right, but isn't that the number that you have figured on seven hundred seventy-five subscriptions?
Seven hundred and fifty. Yeah, seven hundred and fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty. So that means that you're talking about seven hundred fifty homes outside the Bisbee area?
No, no.
Including Bisbee.
No, this would include the folks within the city limits who are often paying us ten or twenty dollars a month to make up the difference between what their insurance covered and what the actual cost of a call was.
And again, we all mean seven hundred seventy-five, or seven hundred fifty, as you say. And not, not gonna affect the ambulance revenue then? So if we do do those seven hundred fifty subscriptions, I guess is what they're called, is that then gonna take away from our overall ambulance charge or not?
Well, the idea is that it'll fill in the gap between what we receive from insurance and what we're able to collect. As Carrie indicated, it's about a seventy percent.
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent collection rate. So this will help make up the difference between our collection rate and the actual cost of providing the service.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution R dash one dash thirteen, adopting tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty.
Second? What is the time for the public hearing?
It's scheduled.
In a second.
In a second.
Okay, I, I think that has, needs to be.
Should that be in, should that be in there?
It should. Should it not? The agenda item is, so if you would, if you wouldn't mind, sir, your, 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 it was just fine, but also add, if you will, that the.
Notice is also given of a public hearing of citizens to be held on June seventh, twenty twenty, at seven P M. on the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget.
Perfect. Thank you. Do we have a second? Second? We have a second from Mayor Pro Tem Pollock. Ms. Cornetta?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino? Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item eleven, discussion of possible approval of two waived fees, suspend service disconnections, and possible credits for decreasing usage of accounts during the stay-at-home order. Ms. Coleman?
Thank you. So we did get this consideration in regards to the conversation at your last meeting. What we're proposing is that we suspend the service disconnection and late fees for non-payment for our residential and business customers through at least May thirty-first, twenty twenty. We can always revisit that based on the current conditions. So then we also encourage our customers who have questions or are facing potential hardship to contact our customer service department by telephone or email. We offer several payment options and can assist customers with payment arrangements if needed. And then we're also including a three dollar per thousand gallon of water usage credit for our commercial customers with proof that there was a decrease in their usage through at least May thirty-first, twenty twenty. So again, if the situation continues and the hotels are not using, for example, hotels, restaurants, businesses aren't using water, we could look at extending that.
I have a question. You said May thirty-first?
Uh, May thirty-first, yeah.
Okay. Also, do they need like, what, bills from January? I mean, bills from February or March to, to present?
Actually, they would be, if you bring their bill from last year for the same time period, to show that they weren't using the same amount of water.
Can they bring that into Carrie? Do they need to fill out?
They, you know what, they could email it, they could drop it in the bill box or payment. They just would like a cover letter. So that's all they needed, et cetera.
Ms. Coleman, my, my only concern is, and I think this is, is, is good for those that definitely need it. My only concern is that the suspension of disconnections that are already in the pipeline, having nothing to do with the COVID-nineteen situation. We have several that have been warned and have promised that they were going to be making payments to us even before the COVID situation and have failed to honor their agreements. And I know that we were ready to pull the plug on a couple of those. And are we giving them a get out of jail free card on this?
Well, the, the get out of jail free card is actually coming from Arizona Water Company. They are not doing any shut-offs.
I see.
And because we work in tandem with them to assure that we're not shutting off the sewer while the water is still on.
Absolutely.
Yeah, then essentially, we're tied to their timeframe.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
If we did follow through with those cutoffs, like that he was just talking about, and we didn't cut off any other people, would that not give them grounds of discrimination? And then probably foul because, you know, I was gonna pay it even though I had to pay it, but now I really can't pay it because of the ramification of the COVID virus. So would it be safer that we honor everybody just to play it safe? Does that make sense?
Not necessarily. It's not a discriminatory act, but, but backing up, it is a gubernatorial mandate that there not be water shut-offs.
Okay.
So as a practical matter, city of Bisbee is practically following that, right? Because Arizona Water Company is following the governor's mandate.
Thank you.
Okay. Discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve waived fees and suspended service dispatches during stay-at-home order. Second?
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, signify by stating aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. We, yes, unanimously. Moving on. Eleven, I'm sorry, twelve, discussion of possible approval of Resolution R twenty fifteen, appointing Teresa Coleman, city manager, as the designated applicant agent for Arizona Division of Emergency Management. Ms. Coleman?
That's up, just updates the contact information with the state. As you can imagine, we're getting more and more communications regarding grant opportunities or funding that's coming our way. For example, like airport funding, and this just updates our contacts.
Any questions? Motion?
I move to approve Resolution R dash twenty dash fifteen, appointing Teresa Coleman, city manager, as the designated applicant agent for the Arizona Division of Emergency Management.
I second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Cornetta?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number thirteen, discussion of possible approval of Resolution R twenty dash eleven, designating Kerry Bagley as the chief fiscal officer and CFO for fiscal year twenty twenty for the purpose of submitting the city's annual expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General's office. Ms. Bagley?
So every year after the auditor completes their reports, I have to submit the annual expenditure limitation report to the auditor general. They require somebody to be the designated CFO to submit the report. And they came out with a uniform resolution that they want all cities and towns to use. So this is just updating the one that was already submitted for the current fiscal year. And then the next one, item thirteen, will be for the upcoming.
Any questions?
Upcoming, maybe.
FY twenty-one.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution, Resolution R dash twenty dash eleven, designating Kerry Bagley as the CFO of the city of Bisbee for fiscal year twenty twenty.
I'll second. Ms. Cornetta?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number fifteen, discussion of possible approval of Amendment Number One to the professional services agreement. Pete?
We need to go back to fourteen and like, repeat.
For this text, please. It is, it is, I apologize.
It looks very similar.
Oh, it. That's what my eyes told me. Item number fourteen, discussion of possible approval of Resolution R twenty dash twelve, designating Kerry Bagley as the chief fiscal officer, CFO, for fiscal year twenty twenty-one for the purpose of submitting the city's annual expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General's office. Ms. Bagley, do you have anything further to say? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution, Resolution R dash twenty dash twelve, designating Kerry Bagley as the CFO of the city of Bisbee for fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
I'll second. Ms. Cornetta?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number fifteen, discussion of possible approval of Amendment Number One to the professional services agreement between the city of Bisbee and Dog Cat Mouse Media LLC for marketing and design services. Ms. Coleman?
This would simply extend the terms and conditions in their current agreement for an additional year.
Any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve Amendment Number One to the professional services agreement between the city of Bisbee and Dog Cat Mouse Media LLC for marketing and design services.
I'll second. Ms. Cornetta, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. City managers, your turn.
I just have one item. And we are making an emergency purchase in order to provide air conditioning for the city health staff. We will bring bids and recommendations to you for retroactive approval at your next meeting.
Yes, we discussed this. The staff has got to have air conditioning. These cities get very, very warm this time of the year, and we have a heat wave still coming upon us. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Klein?
Okay, so at the last meeting on Wednesday, on the budget meetings, Ms. Cornetta was asked to read into the record. And I asked her to print it out so I would make sure that I didn't, I asked her to print it out so that I wouldn't miss quote of what Ms. Chucky said. And what it says is, I know the mayor said he was going to look into this. I think he should, as I have. Councilmember Klein has given erroneous information, and I believe she is too invested in the fire department that she is not looking outside the box. When that was read, what, what I had asked about was the education line, line item in the fire department budget. And I indicated that the chief had told me that he needed a couple more thousand dollars in order to send whoever he needed to school. And then Ms. Johns came up with the solution, and I thought that was the end of it. So I don't know where the erroneous information came from, because it came directly from the chief. So I'm not real sure what she's talking about. But like I said, it came from the chief, not from me. I don't know how much it costs to send somebody to paramedic school or, you know, any of that. So that was, I just wanted to make it clear that it's not erroneous information. I got, I got it directly from the chief. So I'm not sure what she's talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. I move to adjourn.
Second?
We have a motion. We have a second. Those in favor, adjourn. Signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We stand adjourned.